Let's get started with our, we've got a few official things to do first here at the top. So I just want to quickly take attendance here. We've got Howard Burgess for the commission. We've got Jim Hall. We've got Norm Cohen. We've got, no Sherman Hunter yet. We've got Andy Thane. We've got Dana Peterson, Mary Beth Polley, Jerry Sterns, myself, any, okay.
Sherman's missing?
He's going to be late, I think. So let's first quickly approve the agenda for commission members.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Thanks, Andy.
Second.
Dana, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Any other than our guests about the Center Rutland Falls, any other public comment here? Doesn't look like it. And Mary?
Just a big thank you to the Boy Scout troop 120 and 105 and their leaders and your own Barb Pulling for coming to the kayak put-in at Center Rutland Falls on Monday. We wanted to watch the Boy Scouts do it to get some ideas about what was needed there. So thanks, Barbara, that was fun. And she's got some pictures for later. That's all.
Yeah, very, looked like they were going to have a fun trip. They made it down the trail with at least seven kayaks.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was good. And the water was just high enough, I think, at that point. We have someone that just came in, Whitney Christie?
Yes.
And who wasn't expecting you? Can you, are you here for the public?
Yes, Barb, this is Dale Christie. We met in Proctor.
Yes. Hi Dale.
Hi.
Are you just sitting in Dale?
I believe so. I was going to support Jim Rowe. I was hoping he was going to be in attendance and maybe Barry Griffith.
Yeah, I'm here Dale.
Ah, I see you.
Well, great. Dale, you are on the Planning Commission and the Select Board in Proctor, right?
No, just the Planning Commission.
Just the Planning Commission now, okay. Great, great. Well, thanks for, thanks for joining us. So we'll skip right over new business since there's nothing there tonight. We are considering the Pocket Park at Center Rutland Falls as old business because we've talked about it a couple, couple of times. We've done some site visits out there. We've done some mapping and some listing of possible features in the park. So tonight, we want to have some local historians come join us. And we have several here. And I've got, I don't know if anyone was able to check their email about a half hour ago. Elaine Purdy was hoping to join us. She didn't quite get through the Zoom gauntlet, but she, she left some notes as well. And she's, she's done some broad history here. We've got a couple of folks here from the Crown Point Road, the Green Mountain Boys, and Barbara Giffen is now president of the Rutland Historical Society. And she's here. So let me start just by reading a few things that Elaine wrote in the email. She writes that there's something awe inspiring about the waterfall. It's wild beauty. This alone would be enough to merit providing a quiet place for contemplation at Meads Falls in Center Rutland. But Meads Falls is much more than a natural wonder. It has played a part in American history. In the beginning, Native Americans recognized the falls a landmark and resting place while they were following Otter Creek on trading and scouting expeditions. White settlers and soldiers followed in their footsteps. The site has always marked a crossroads. I'm sure the roots of Crown Point, Mount Independence, and Skeensboro roads will be mentioned, but add to them Boardman Hill and Quarterline Roads, essential connections to Arlington, Dorset, and on to the Hudson River. Since 1849, three railroad lines have bridged the falls, making east-west, north-south connections to the rest of the country. This marked the arrival of the marble industry. The area surrounding Meads Falls was Rutland's original settlement and a key player in its growth and prosperity. So, let's go to, let's start as close to the beginning as we can with the Crown Point Road representatives here and the Green Mountain Boys that we have. So we have Jim Rowe and we also have Barry Griffith. Jim, did you want to start off?
Yeah, I'll start off. I'm kind of going to go with a lot of what Elaine said in regards to a lot of history that went on in that area. And like Elaine said, that there was a, the Native Americans used the Otter Creek as a pathway, basically from the Black River Valley, from the Connecticut River, over to the Otter Creek Valley and on up to Lake Champlain. And they also would have come up from the south. And that was in use for hundreds, if not thousands of years. Then by 1759, the, the main Crown Point Road was cut from Charlestown, New Hampshire, through the Black River Valley into the Otter Creek Valley and on up to Crown Point, New York. By 1772, there was a road laid out from Skeensboro, now White Hall, to Rutland, which pretty much runs the way Route 4 does now. By 1776, we had the Mount Independence Hubbardon Road coming in from the south end of Mount Independence to Center Rutland. And that same year, that was probably one of the first bridges built across Otter Creek, and it was the first one there. And you had Fort Ranger that was right there also, probably a blockhouse in 1776. And within a few months, it was actually a picketed fort. And the bridge that they, they built there, I mean, that was a huge undertaking by the Revolutionary War soldiers. They worked a couple hard months on that. You had James Meade that was there pretty early prior to the revolution with the mills there at the falls. And to recognize the fort and the Crown Point Road, the Anne Story Chapter of the DAR placed the granite watering trough at where East Proctor Road comes into Business Route 4 now. That got moved in 1959 to the location that it's at now, which, I know, I asked many people if they know of the watering trough. And most of the people I asked, they've never seen it, never noticed it there. And I've tried to keep some of the brush cut back. And it is, it's hard to see. So it'd be great if it could get relocated. So after Meade and after the Revolutionary War, undoubtedly, I don't know the full history of the mills there, but I think that went on for quite a few years. And at present, Green Mountain Power has their hydro plant there. So it's quite a significant area. Yeah, that's about all I have on it, I guess.
Okay. Barry, do you want to go next?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, I certainly, I can't add a whole lot. I mean, Elaine Purdy, she is my go-to person. And then if you don't know Elaine, she could, she knows, she's forgotten more about this area than the rest of us know combined, I think. So I'm glad she chimed in with her email. And I would encourage you to get hold of her. It is a, I did, I did send your Chair Barbara Pulling some, some old photos that maybe you can share, Barbara, with the group. One was of that 1903 marker and its original site, back when the trolley still went by. And I think I also sent a copy of the, the marker itself that I took in the last couple of years. Again, just to speed by there and don't see it. And one of the things we would love to see is to somehow make that more visible in the, in the pocket park, Pocket Park that you're talking about. I would say I, I'm a fan of Vermont history. I was born and raised in Bennington. So it was hard not to be, to learn about Vermont history. Growing up in Bennington, I grew up near the, the old Henry Bridge on the Waloosack River, which was halfway between the Breckenridge Farm, which, which we refer to as the birth of Vermont, the birthplace of Vermont. The Green Mountain Boys came there when the sheriff from New York came over to try to eject Breckenridge. And the Green Mountain Boys held the ground. And that is credited with being the formation of the state of Vermont. It's also a few miles away from the, the site of the Battle of Bennington. And it was the crossing that, on the road to the, to the, to the store, storehouse that was the object of the, of the British. And I learned that was the turning point of the American Revolution. So it was a beautiful place to grow up. On a dirt road, unlike, unlike Center Rutland, which is pretty developed. I did go back a few years ago, and I was pleasantly surprised. It was all grass and brush when I grew up. But I was pleasantly surprised to see that the village of Old Bennington had turned that into a pocket park. Had cleared it off, put in some benches and some other accoutrements. And also had put up several interpretive signs talking about the history of the area. I did send Barb Pulling some copies of fixtures that I took down there recently when I was there. And, and I think that would be a wonderful opportunity for, for the Meads Falls areas. As proud as I am of growing up in that crossroads, that Center Rutland crossroads is equally, if not more historic. So I, there's a lot of interest beyond members of the Rutland Town Boards. And I hope you folks can do something. And I'd be happy to do my part to help with that in any way I can.
Thank you. Thank you, Barry. Let's go to Barbara Giffen before we open it up for questions. Let's go to our last historian, not last, but our third one here this evening. Take it away, Barbara.
Thank you for inviting me here. I had, excuse me, talked to Mary Ashwell a couple years ago regarding that trough. And saying, you know, if you can move it, that would be awesome. And I was the Regent of DAR Anne Story Chapter then. Now, um...
In 1903?
Well, maybe not that long ago. No, this is, but, anything that you could do to, to bring that out and, and tell its story would be great. I mean, even if you had to do an interim move for that trough near the town hall as an interim, where it is right now, anybody who wanted to stop and see it will die, quite honestly. Yeah, we try and put the, the flags on it every year. And thank you for taking care of it, taking the brush away from it. That's awesome. We do try and keep the flags on it before Memorial Day from the DAR. But, and that, that's quite a perilous endeavor. So, the Pocket Park is a splendid idea. I have talked to some of the other people who have been in the Rutland area for quite a considerable amount of time. And one gentleman told me that when he was a youngster, he used to hop on the trolley and go down to a park that was there. So I don't know if anybody knows about that or not. But they used to have like a little petting zoo or whatever. And it was very nice. And he said they used to bring steak necks and everything right there by the falls. So I don't know if what I was told is completely true. But the guy knows his stuff, and I have no reason to doubt it. But to bring it back, if that's the case, to what it was, that would be, you know, very fitting and very, very, it's a beautiful spot. You should use it. And not only that, historically, so important for the Rutland area. You need to just use that to your, to, to the town's advantage. You could really get on really good, in some radar. That would be very, uh, it would be an important area in, in the whole history of the United States, actually, because that's what we're talking about. We're talking about the Green Mountain Boys, the first Native Americans in Vermont, in the lower part of the state that wasn't Bennington. You know, once you get up to this area, you're deep in Revolutionary War history. You've got to use that.
And Barbara, would the society, the Rutland Historical Society be interested in partnering in some form with the town?
I don't know what we can do for you, but we would definitely have your back on that.
Yeah, I'm thinking, you know, maybe digital links or online links to all the resources that you have?
Oh, gosh, yes. Our website is perfect. This is great fodder for that. The SARs have, you know, they're, they're, they're very interested in this stuff. The Boca, Vermont Cemetery Association would, would be right there for you. Oh, gosh. You know, you name it, will help.
Okay, thank you. Okay, questions. Mary, do you want to, do you have anything you want to jump in?
Yeah, I have a couple. And I think Barbara has touched on them. But let me, the watering trough, it's okay with everybody if we move it. As a historian myself, and I got to say, Barry, past president here of the Bellett Falls Historical Society, it's okay to move it because where it is now is not historically accurate anyway, right?
Yeah, that's kind of correct. I mean, it's been moved once anyway. And other than in our marker book, which notes that it's been moved, it'd be kind of confusing for somebody to read it today and figure out what was what there. So, and I think it'd be great to move it where, definitely get it more visible.
Well, not only that, but where it is, the salt is just eating away at it. And it's not going to help it at all. I don't know if it's ever been hit by the blade of a plow or not, or close. But all that stuff gets lashed up on there.
Yeah, that's another good point there.
And another question. Is it possible to put it back in its original location, which would be, what, 1903, right?
Correct.
03.
Or has that intersection changed too much?
I think it'd be too much of a target.
Yeah. And I think it would be right in the middle of the road.
Yeah, I also don't want to mention it to our road commissioner. So, okay.
It was the end of East Proctor Road there.
Yeah.
Okay. No, related, road-related. We're sure, or as reasonably sure as we can be, that the Crown Point Road came into this area? Do we know where?
We may not be able to say exactly where, but it was on the west side of Otter Creek, just a little ways. And then there was another branch road of the Crown Point Road that basically followed along West Street up to where North and South Main goes, where Fort Rutland was up there. And there was a branch road that struck off up towards Pittsford and crossed at Pitts Ford.
Okay. Because I know it comes, it is said to come across my farm in, on Creek Road.
Yeah.
And there's a marker further down on Creek Road, a crossing there. So it, so if we have commemorative markers, then all of these things would be covered presumably.
Should be.
Okay. And from your experience in other places, what's the best park-type area or display-type area that you've seen that has public access, but also commemorative historic plaques that you could recommend to us to use as an example?
Well, Barry Griffith here. I spoke previously of the, the park down my, near my old home in North Bennington, near the old Henry Bridge. I did give send Barb Pulling a few pictures that I took when my last trip down there. It's an hour or so away. Basically, they cleared the area out and put some picnic tables up, had some interpretive signs. And that, to me, is the best example that I can think of that you might want to use for a model. Maybe someone else has some other ideas.
Good. Thanks, Barry.
Yeah, I guess about the only thing I could offer is, you know, whenever you go to a historic site, it's always nice to see the interpretive signs placed, you know, approximately where different events happened. Usually there's a map and some wordage there too, that kind of explains it. So it's very helpful.
Oh, and I should say thank you all very much, all of the historians and all of the Planning Commission members. I'm on the Select Board in Rutland Town, and we're constantly dumping new projects on this very resilient Planning Commission. So we're very grateful to all of you.
Dale, did you have any questions or comments you wanted to make from, from Proctor?
Not at the moment, until we get into further details.
Okay, okay. Okay, let's open it up to the Planning Commission for any questions of our, our guests. Just raise your hand. Jerry, did you have anything before you have to go? And Norm, I saw you. Norm?
I'm just, um, a little bit concerned. I wondered if anybody could just give us a rough drawing of where some of these things are now and where, for instance, you know, when the roads that Barbara was talking about intersect, or the gentleman before Barbara, roughly where they are in relation to what we have. Maybe we could provide these folks with a copy of one of the maps. So we could locate them with respect to the proposed path or something, some kind of lost in all the logistics. And maybe, and of course, maybe it's too soon to deal with that. I don't know. But I just am having a hard time in my mind locating these various sites.
I'm wondering if this Pocket Park could be the place where you start maybe several walking tours of areas in, you know, the, the fort and, you know, maybe some of the mills that were there. Some of, some of those sorts of things. And I just wanted to see what our historians thought of that. Besides having signage there right in place, maybe expanding that a little bit.
I don't know what you could ever, I don't think you could ever walk any great distance just because everything's been so badly disturbed there over the years. I mean, the railroad just wiped a lot of stuff right out. There was Rutland plywood that was built there, about where the fort was. And, you know, that's all obliterated now. The new Route 4, well, I won't, I'll call it the Business Route 4, I guess is what it is. I mean, that's really was a major construction there. I mean, I can recall in early 60s, the original road coming through there. And it's a whole lot bigger now. And I think it's getting bigger all the time because all the bridge work that's gone on there, crossing Otter Creek. So it'd be very hard to find any historic evidence left of anything there, really. And I think signage and try to interpret what was there would be pretty crucial.
Barbara, Barbara Giffen, what about virtual walking tours? Do they, do they work?
Well, we've got a couple of them on our website. I don't know if they work or not. I haven't really taken a look at the, on those particular sites. It's, it's an idea that, you know, you could, boy, that's going to take some, some very good imagination. But, but you could, you could do it. I mean, there's pictures from 1860 on up of various assembly things. So you could incorporate the pictures as a part of that walking tour. There's posters, a lot of posters for that. So it's a possibility, I suppose.
Yeah, even with all the signage that, interpretive signs that could be there, as long as there was links to websites. I mean, the Crown Point Road Association has a wonderful site. And I know, you know, a lot of other, I'm sure Rutland Historical Society, we know all the information that they have, be, you know, a way to give people access to, if they wanted to look into some of the further history that went on there.
Barbara, I just dropped into the chat a link to a Google map of the Crown Point Road. That if people want to, for Norman's benefit, he can click on that, or anybody else can click on that. And you can at least see the markers that they have in place along the Crown Point Road that runs from New York all the way down to past Claremont. So hopefully that would be beneficial to, to folks, us, or whoever is involved in the project as we move forward. I think it's a pretty easy reference. And there are probably, oh, scores of markers that you already can see there on that, on that link. There must be almost 100. So, I mean, that's, that's a place to start if we, to Norman's point, want to look at what that might be and what the area would be. You can zoom in with Google on any one of those particular markers and get some more information.
Thank you, Dana.
Welcome.
Bill, if you're still there, could you mute Jim Hall's audio? Okay, that cleans that up. And Jim, unmute yourself. Yeah, Barbara?
Also on the Historical Society website, I don't know if you've ever taken a look at that. But we do have old, old maps of the area, not just the Rutland city. But there are old maps that can maybe help. And in addition to the maps that Dana was talking about, I think everything is, might be online to take a look at. You just have to hunt
Okay. Barry, you just chime in whenever you feel the need to. And Jim, just speak up, just unmute yourself and speak up whenever you need to. We had a little extraneous noise there.
Well, I could add one brief.
Well, I could add one brief thing about the, like most roads, the Crown Point Road changed, it changed where it was over time. It was originally built during the French and Indian War. And at that time, it, it basically stayed west of Otter Creek, down past Mary's House into, into Clarendon, and then crossed over to the east. By 1776, the next war, there were settlements in Rutland and other places. So what happened at that point, when soldiers got into the Clarendon area, they essentially turned north and came up Route 7 to the junction of West Street, and then turned, went down West Street, and then crossed over the Otter Creek near Meads Falls that we're talking about now. So, so that's the, there is that little distinction that you want to make, and I'll make that now.
So Barbara, in addition, I think that there are some references in historical, historical information that Mount Independence is also referencing the Crown Point Road, if I'm not mistaken.
This one?
So that would be another connection to the state parks, if we wanted to, if we're looking for additional partners.
Just a reminder that this pocket park is also a project with Green Mountain Power. And the whole reason it's come up at this particular time is because GMP is going through relicensing, perk relicensing of their power plant at Center Rutland Falls. So they're very eager to partner with us. Part of their relicensing requirement is public access. And I've been invited to meetings, and they joined the planning commission at a site visit. So, and some of the early industry at the falls, I mean, the, their power plant is actually historic itself. So we want to make sure that we include the more modern ancient history of the site, including the power and Green Mountain Power.
And that would take us into at least the mid-1800s, right historians? Barbara?
I just have an extra thing here. If you need
Yeah, it's like it's not responding.
If you need bodies to help you with any restoration or anything, I was kindly voluntold that the Comcast people would partner with you to do that. They helped with the restoration of that cemetery right next to your town hall. And they worked, there was, I was there, how many trucks were there? There were six, seven trucks there with a wood chipper and the whole business. So they did a lot of work in, in the morning, and they, they were an awesome group. And, yeah, they've been, they've been volunteered. Well, yeah, you'd have to ask them, but you could kind of bench them all on switch of arms.
Barbara, to Mary's point, I think we took that up at the last planning commission meeting, the historical nature of the Green Mountain Power original plant, and to do something highlighting its
It's funny, I can hear him, but.
Its value, and also if some of the original equipment were still available, we could put that on display, kind of as a museum display or something else. So I think that there are a lot of connections.
Yes.
If we dig deep enough, that would bring in a wide variety of community supporters. So I'm excited.
Yeah, not to mention the Vermont Marble, whole period of history there. Okay, I think we lost Jim Rowe, but we still have Barry and Barbara here to answer.
They're having connection issues, so they keep dropping out and cutting back in, but they're, they're in there, but not by much.
Okay. Any other questions of the historians? Jim Hall, are you there? Do you have any questions?
No, I don't, but I just want to, you know, speaking about the power station in Vermont Marble, there were quite a few homes that are considered to be former Marble Company houses around Center Rutland. And I believe that those homes were equipped with electricity early on in the game, probably earlier than most of the L.A. areas. So So they, I can't give you the dates and that sort of thing, but I did, I have heard from time to time about Center Rutland being electrified before the rest of the area was. So anyway, just thought I'd pass that on.
And does anyone know, I think there was a, a prominent family, the Ripley's, that were in Center Rutland, that were involved with early Rutland history. Their names are still on certain roads and such now. Anyone know anything about the Ripley's, or are there any families like that that we should be aware of as well?
Well, the Meads Falls is Meads, Governor Meads. Also, Ripley's, it's too bad Elaine Purdy isn't here, because she would have fooled you well.
Now it went again, mother.
Was that you touching that?
Yeah.
We could hear you, Jim.
Barry Griffith here. Again, I know a little bit about the Ripley's. Elaine would know a lot more. Their house was sort of near the Evergreen Cemetery on the west side of that. It was one, as I recall. And of course, that was, I think, I think he was involved in this around the Civil War era, as I recall. And that's as much as my, I can dig out right at the moment, but that isn't in that area, yes.
Yeah, Dale. Go ahead, Dale.
In the chat window, I attached a couple of images that I got from the Crown Point Road Markers Book. One shows the watering trough. It has a caption. I didn't read it, but it's there for everybody. And the second image is a small map or an excerpt from a map.
Can I try this again?
Of my road through the Center Rutland area.
I don't know what's going on.
Thank you, Dale. Hey, Bill, could you mute Jim Rowe until we see him again?
Yeah, it's, I'm not sure what the issue's on their end, but I just put him back in the waiting room, so they'll, they'll sort it out.
Okay. Well, should we let the historians go and enjoy the rest of the evening? Are there any other questions? See none. Thank you, Barbara. Thank you, Jim and Barry, unless you have any closing remarks?
Thank you very much for inviting us, and I am excited over this. I think if you've got a state historical marker in there, people do stop and they, they look for those. I don't see a downside to this. I really don't.
Yeah, there goes again.
There's that side street there. There wouldn't be any problem with access or egress. Boy, you've really got a special place there. I hope you use it. Thank you very much again for inviting me. It's been a pleasure. Bye.
Thank you. Thank you. Barry?
No, nothing to add. Again, I'm excited about the project, and if, if I can help personally, or the Crown Point Road Association can help, just let us know. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Bill, is, is Jim Rowe in the waiting room, or is he?
They're kind of like in limbo. They're not joined, but they're not out, and I can't do anything with them at the moment, so.
Okay, okay. Thanks for, thanks for your efforts.
Yeah, he's playing, he'll play connect just a second, then he can hang up.
They're waiting for you.
Jim Rowe, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, okay.
So we're just wrapping up here.
Yeah.
Did you have some things you wanted to add?
Well, I guess what I can add is, I think on behalf of the Crown Point Road Association, that we would very much like to assist you in any way that we can. I know a lot of the maps that show the Crown Point Road, they're pretty general roots of the road are shown. It's hard to exactly pinpoint where it did run, but we've got some pretty good ideas. The DAR did a wonderful job of placing some of those granite monuments over 100 years ago. They were working with the best information they had at the time, and the takes in the numerous routes of the road, so kind of take it with a grain of salt. But, yeah, I guess our big thing here, we'd, we'd love to see that watering trough set up in some nice little park with some interpretive signage there to just tell the history of the area. It was, it's quite a busy, busy place. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for joining us, Jim.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Have a good evening. Dana, not to put you on the spot too much, but do you want to bring, but I'm going to. I'll do the slow
Norman usually does that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm channeling Norm. Would you bring Mary and some of the others up to speed on where we are with, you know, our review of the area, the mapping and all that?
Sure. So we put together a, with a lot of collaborative effort, a, I think it's a four-page document dealing with some of the information that we gathered via photos on our walking site visit back in July. And we put some of the ideas that we captured around each one of the pocket park areas. We addressed some of the aspects of the Crown Point Road, and we talked a little bit about the various areas that we could highlight, as well as the partnerships that we could explore, and the possibilities for doing work even around the, the put-in area around the, the launch, in terms of making contact with the Stafford Technical Center, with the Natural Resources Program to actually do some of the, some of the clearing and tree removal that is spanning the creek there. I actually reached out to one of the, it wasn't my task, I don't think, but I happened to run in contact with someone from Stafford, one of the programs. And he thought it would be a great idea for us to talk to the Natural Resources Department. We want to, might want to give them a little time, as they're very busy right now with the start of school and trying to get things up and running. But he is an instructor in the engineering department, and thought that it would be really quite valuable to partner with the Natural Resources Program, because that would be a program, that would be a project that would run up their alley. What else did we talk about? I'm going off the top of my head here, Barbara, so you have to bear with me. There's no, there's no sequence or no sort of running from it's all.
Yeah, I apologize. That's
It's okay. So we documented with pictures, a variety of things, including the map that Mary Beth and the Otter Creek Engineering folks have redone in terms of putting specific markers on there. We had a very good discussion, or a couple of discussions, and they're all blending into one right now, where we talked about the variety of projects that will need to take place to develop that pocket park area. But there's a lot of excitement and a lot of possibilities for partnership. And all of that was the precursor to reaching out to the Historical Society to find out more about the Crown Point Road, because that had generated a lot of interest. And so we were looking even at, at possible grants and so forth for helping to develop the Route 4 corridor over to West Rutland. I'm probably going way off task here, Barbara, now, but this is what in my head, and you ask for brain dumps, that's what you can get.
That's what I get, right?
Well, that's why we brought in Proctor, and, oh, he's gone, isn't he?
Yeah, I think he's
That was Dale, talking about, you know, having the pocket park be an extension through the Otter Creek, using it for boating purposes, kayaking, canoeing, up to Proctor, and having that as a, a stretch that we could develop. So we're looking to focus on the pocket park, but we've looked at many different stages that go into West Rutland, Proctor, and even along that whole trail that the Historical Society mentioned today. So tell me if I can stop talking now, Barbara.
Yeah, that's, that's great. You covered, you covered the territory pretty well. And, you know, one of the more immediate decisions for the select board to make is in regards to the municipal planning grant, if we want to apply for that.
In October.
And, yeah, to look at this pocket park. And, and the planning commission decided that if we're going to go that route, we wouldn't be including the other towns at this point.
So we'd be looking for a $24,000 or $22,000 grant, as opposed to a $38,000 grant with multiple communities. Is that right, Barbara?
Well, I don't, I'm still waiting for my colleagues to give me a, you know, a fair estimate of, you know, what something like that would, would cost. But that's, that is the range.
The range, right, for a single municipality, I think it was 22 or 24, I can't remember.
It's the max.
If you were partnering with other municipalities, it was a larger amount, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
Those are maxes, though, not, not necessarily what we'd want, right?
Right. The minimum was like $2,500, something like that.
And that's on our next planning commission agenda, is that right, for September? Do we visit that, or is that on, that's not on tonight's agenda?
Yeah, well, I hope to bring it up with the select board again next week.
Right, so we might be doing something, right?
Yeah. Yeah, Mary. You're
You're muted, Mary. I think, we can't hear you either way.
Your phone is muted, Mary.
She's getting on the back phone.
Okay. Do you know what, am I on now?
You are.
Okay. What the municipal share would be for any match? 50%, 20, 25?
20.
Okay.
I believe it's 20.
And the planning grant would be to plan the design, or plan the markers, or what would the grant be for?
It could be either of those.
My, my guess, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Chairman.
My, my guess is that the, the initial grant would be, as you said, Mary, to plan the design, so that we, we would know exactly what we want, and to get some professional help also in, in figuring out what it would look like. That's usually a first step in something like this. So, and have a, some professional input into it, so we wouldn't run off in a bad direction, I guess.
And I was hoping that, I was hoping that historians, or a history-centric consultant could be used as part of this, too. Sorry to cut you off. Sorry to cut you off, Mary.
Well, no, that's okay. I was just sort of thinking out loud from our last trip there. So, they would help us, you know, determine where a pathway could be cut, for example, and plan the engineering around it, indicate what permits would be needed, if any, tell us where an appropriate place for the kayak put in, you know, or what modifications may need to be made, plan the little steps that we talked about over near the trestle for the people who are fishing there, all of that sort of thing.
Plus, give us an estimate on what the next phase would be.
Yeah.
I think Mary Beth probably has more experience in this than most of us in the process.
I don't want it to seem to the Select Board like we're taking a step backward. That we're holding up now to get a Planning Grant to do planning, which we were hoping the Planning Commission was doing. So, it needs to look a little different from what we asked you folks to do.
I'm a little bit, may I speak?
Sure.
No, no.
Thank you.
You have the floor, Norm.
Oh, I thought you said no. Dana, and Dana was agreeing with you. Anyway, I'm a little puzzled by Mary's remarks, because we don't have, as enlightened as this group is or holds itself out to be, and I won't decide which, we don't have a lot of the expertise to go much further to much more detail, Mary, so I don't, I'm, the way you stated it concerns me, because I don't know what the expectations of the Select Board were. But to get anywhere beyond where we are now, we're going to need professional help. At least, just the way I see it.
Go ahead, Mary, Mary Beth.
Oh, sorry, Beth. Well, to address the engineering side of things, you know, there would need to, well, there probably would need to be a survey if you wanted to decide exactly where things, you know, were going. You know, if you wanted an actual design of, we're putting the stairs here, and this grade works, and, because this is, what we have now is more of like a concept plan, just using the topo information, and and I, you know, on the historical side, I think that would make sense, too, we kind of have a general idea, but if we're deciding what exactly would be on plaques, what, which type of information would be most important, that would, it would make sense to have a professional, help us with that aspect of it, too.
Okay, I just needed to know how best to sell this to the rest of the Select Board, so that is helpful. And presumably with the next phase, if we received the Planning Grant and we had some of the engineering and the planning done, we could then go for grants to do the actual construction, and that piece would all be there. Okay.
So, Mary, to that, to that point, first of all, correction, it's only 10%. I wanted to go back and check my notes, but it's a 10% match. So, if you're asking for $2,200, you only have to put in $2,200. But, so actually, just a clarification, we did talk at our, I think it's our last meeting, but anybody who remembers better than I can certainly chime in. And we talked about this, we were getting a lot of excitement, and the project was beginning to grow. And so, we saw all of the connections, and I think the Planning Grant is important for not just focusing on the little pocket park itself, but how it fits into the greater historical and regional context. And that would be a possibility for future grants to involve more communities tying into the historical component of the Crown Point Trail. But that we thought we would focus initially on the pocket park itself, and how we could get, how we could leverage additional support for getting that work done, and the recommendations about how to do that. Not that we couldn't start by making those local connections right now to have trees cleared and things like that. But it's going to be more than just a three-week project. So, in conjunction with GMP, and they want to continue to have dialogue with us, it's going to take more resources and planning than we originally thought, in terms of just focusing on one small area by Simon's Avenue. So, the more we looked at the connections, the more items were brought into it. And we thought that it would be good to recommend to the Planning, excuse me, the Select Board, that we were going to pursue this grant to help with expanding beyond just a little bit of cleanup of the area. So, it would have to be staged or a level approach, it would be like a, creating a a semester plan for learning, rather than, you know, a day's lesson plan, or even a unit, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mary.
All of this is helpful, and I would toss in one other thing, and that is, I think Mary Beth mentioned surveying. We, this is a joint project with Green Mountain Power, and we will need to do some kind of memorandum of understanding, probably easements. And so, the survey will be necessary so that we'll, you know, we can delineate the spaces appropriately. So, all of this is making sense, and it should be all part of what we're requesting the grant to do. Yes, good, thank you.
Chairman.
Just in support of what Dana and Mary Beth said, if we put together what we have so far, we have pictures and some stuff, the data's done, and just represent that as a concept of what we plan to do as a first stage. And that's a, I think that's a commonly used term for projects like this. And then, then you could have that in your hands as something that's a product of what Dana has done.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I did see what Dana had put together, and that looked very good. And then, with a sketch that sort of outlines what we're thinking. And then, go to the Select Board with that and ask them to, ask us to toss in a grant application. I think that's, that probably would be appropriate. And we're training Bill Sweet to do grant applications.
And, Mary, this particular grant, this Municipal Planning Grant, MPG, goes through the Regional Planning Commission. They submit them to the state. So, if you want, I don't, obviously, I don't work with these on a day-to-day basis. So, if you want someone who is much more knowledgeable about those MPG's from the Regional Commission to visit with Select Board, just let me know.
Okay.
And they can hop on to the next meeting.
The agenda just came out for the next meeting, so it might be the meeting after that. Whatever fits your timing, yeah.
Yeah, the deadline is, I think, the first of October.
Okay.
So, for Dana and anyone else that wants to be involved, we haven't used our free official site plan cleanup. I just added a bunch of notes in Adobe for our discussion. So, we should get together and decide what exactly we want on the concept plan. And that's what we can use to present to the Select Board and use in any grant applications. So, maybe before that next Select Board meeting, we can get together virtually and clean everything up, and decide what exactly you want to propose, and keep on there, because there's a lot of brainstorming.
So, Mary, do you think at the next meeting, the Select Board could make a decision about whether to go for the grant? And then, then we can start putting these other, start finishing these other aspects for the actual application?
Well, our meeting is Tuesday, so that's, what, September 1st? And if you present the concept and tell us roughly how much we should be applying for, and why we're doing it, it still would be good to have something to show the Select Board as the work product. So, if it can't make it by September 1st, our next meeting is the 15th. And that's, might be crunching it too much for you folks.
And so, it's due October 1st, the Municipal Planning?
Yeah.
Well, I can meet, I can meet before then, Dana and whoever wants, just to clean it up enough for the Select Board.
So, I would, I would suggest then, if we can't make the, if we can't make the first, which doesn't look possible, given that we're Thursday, then we, what I would suggest is that we start our work on the grant and make the proposal to the Select Board, before the 15th, get that on the agenda for the 15th. Give them all the documentation and ask them, give us the blessing, but we be prepared by the 17th to have at least a draft of what that Planning Grant should look like, so that if we need to do a work session on the 17th, we'll have time. But that means we're going to have to do work between now and the 15th, or let's even say, now and the 10th of September, to get things together so that they would be ready for the Select Board. So, that's pretty ambitious, but I can, I can make some time, Mary Beth, if if you have some time, and we can, we can pull something together. We don't need to do the survey.
You have school starting.
I know, I know. Trust me, I know. No time, but it might have to be a Saturday, Mary Beth. But, yeah, we can do something, or we can do it virtually, or whatever. But I think we've got a good start, and actually, the map that you had redone, I mean, maybe that's all we need to do if we give those two documents. Maybe they could do that for next, for next Tuesday. You know, if your map and the document that we collaborated on with the pictures and the descriptions went to the Select Board next week with Mary's approval, that would, that would allow them to at least give us concept approval, and then we still have to make the same timeline, because we need to have something in draft form before the 17th, if we're going to have any substantive discussion, and make any revisions, because it's two weeks after that that the deadline is, it's 6:00 on the 1st. So.
Yeah, that sounds like a really good timeline to kind of work at, because, again, this goes through the Regional Planning Commission, this whole application. So, we need, Bill, or whoever it is, needs to work with someone at the Regional Planning Commission to submit this grant. So, getting their, getting their input as early as possible, and maybe they'll look at what we have already cleaned up a little bit, and say, that's enough. We just need them to give us some opinion on that as well, early on, and, and they can help, you know, they, you know, the Regional Commission can actually write the grant.
We should also let Green Mountain Power know, and show them what we would be showing to the Select Board, and that we're going for this grant, and make sure that they would sign on with us as co-owners of the property. I mean, they own most of the property.
What's the best way, Mary, to get that information to GMP? Is that through Bill, or?
I think, Bill, you have, you have the folks who were at the last site visit as well. And I think we have the emails for the consultant and the person, Greenan, is it, John Greenan? Did Bill go away?
I had the attendance from the original meeting, so, yeah, but I think, I think he's on there.
Yeah, and I'll go through my emails, too, because we've emailed back and forth, and I'll make sure you have the consultant.
Jerry, did you have something?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna step out here at this point, but it's pretty exciting. I'm glad everybody's put, and I haven't put in the effort that everybody else has, and I certainly appreciate everybody's effort. It's a, it's a pretty cool project. I hope it moves forward. So, that was it, and I hope to see everybody next time.
Okay, great, great, thanks. So, what do we need for next Tuesday's meeting, Mary?
Sorry, what?
For next Tuesday's meeting, we should probably have been in contact with Green Mountain Power, in contact with the Regional Planning Commission. You want, we want to get a dollar figure from them of, you know, how much we should be asking for. And we'll clean up our, our map and our list of features. Anything else?
And then, Bill will, Bill will have the minutes from this meeting, so that, I know JP was especially interested in getting the history of the area. So, if we also had the minutes for tonight's meeting that, you know, pinpointed some of the cultural things.
Sure.
That would be a nice packet. That would keep the Select Board reading for a while.
The packet is in the mail, but I can certainly add it in.
Yeah, that's true, it is, yeah.
And the email from Elaine was really nice, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would include that. I would definitely include that. So, maybe Bill can just send out electronically to the Select Board other, other materials that didn't make it into the packet, because our meeting hadn't happened. Oh, I do every week, yep. Oh, good.
Yes, we call it the on-the-desk pile.
So, with respect to the ask, I don't know that, I don't know that the Select Board needs to know the exact amount, or there's what we're going to ask for before we've even done any of the work to look into it. But my, my recommendation would be that they would be approving a possible allocation for a grant that could be as much as $22,000, even though we don't know what that will be, meaning that the Select Board would be on the hook for no more than $2,200. Does that sound reasonable, or not? Because, I mean, even if we ask for a $10,000 training grant, it's, it's $1,000. So, I mean, what we tend to do in schools is we ask our board to commit a certain percentage based on what we think we're going, what the maximum amount of the grant could possibly be, so that we have the flexibility of being able to go up to that amount, and then they know that if it's not going to be that much, it's still approved. I mean, our work is still approved. Unless they are concerned that $2,200 is too much for us to expend. But in that case, I think we should take up a donation to come up with.
You know, of course, we're watching the dollars coming in, because, because of the whole COVID thing. So, if you could identify, and I can work with Barbara on this, identify a possible source for that match. I mean, we do have money in transport, in the Highway Department Fund, for example. And, and we do have engineering for, under Recreation, but I think more engineering under Highway Department, and it's possible we could use some of that for a match. And that probably would be the logical place to to put it in. When would the grant be awarded, and when would we have to come up with the match? Are we talking this current fiscal year that we're in, or are we talking next fiscal year?
The awards are in December.
Yes, they are in December, and they're usually, they're usually for a year and a half.
Okay.
So, we're probably, probably covering two fiscal years with this.
Okay.
Yeah, 2022, June 30, 2022 is the final report, based on the timeline that I have in front of me.
So, I mean, it's possible, and we've done this with other things, it's possible, for example, of splitting the allocation over two years, if we, if we couldn't do it all in one year. So, I think there are ways of working, working with this.
Norm?
Yeah. Mary, just curious why you suggested there might be money in the Highway Fund? Is that because of a light snow year? Light snow and sanding as compared to prior years?
No, actually, the Highway, now, remember, we're in the new fiscal year now. So, the Highway budget last fiscal year took more of a wallop, because of, there was actually a lot of snow and ice, and a lot of plowing late into, you know, April even. So, but this coming fiscal year is the one I'm looking at, and we have, for example, And we have, for example, got some money in there for what we call JP's sidewalk, which is an interconnected sidewalk up by Mr. Twitter's area to link to Post Road sidewalk. We have some, and I think there's also money there to continue some work on the Northwood Park Trail. So that's where I would look at possibly finding $2,200 as a match if we. Of course, then there's the Planning Commission salary line, you know.
Always up for grabs.
I thought we were promised an increase for next year, Mary.
You're breaking up. Norm can't hear you.
I'll call. Okay.
Okay. Anything else on on this? On the pocket park? Going once?
I think we've done a good job, Barbara.
I think we have. Thanks, Mary. Thank you. Oh, we have a guest.
He was feeling left out.
Okay, a couple more things to go over tonight. Down in announcements, if anyone's interested, there's going to be a construction site visit at the site of the new Harbor Freight store. That's September 26 at 10:00 AM, right, Bill?
That's September 16th.
September 16th, yes.
It's the 16th, yeah, at 10:00 AM.
It's a Wednesday. Is that behind?
Aldi's.
Yeah, behind Aldi's. Okay.
You'd have to park at Aldi's. Yeah, that's the only place to park.
Okay.
Okay, there's, there's that. And then I asked the select board, but it was only via email. This, this came in since they last met and I'll bring it up again Tuesday night. But there is a sizable solar project being proposed on Thomas Dairy Land, but this is near the Armory. It's kind of between.
Behind, behind Kerry's auto.
So I think we're looking at two, two installations, each of them being about the size of the one in North Clarendon, if I'm not mistaken. So I asked the select board, the, the company wrote us and said, you know, that they'd like to start a dialogue. And and I asked the select board, you know, can we do this? Let's bring them in and and bring them in early and start talking about this project. So I'll bring that up again unless, unless you folks don't want, don't want me to do that. It would probably would be either at a select board meeting or maybe a special meeting for the two of us. But most likely, it'll be at a future select board meeting. Does that sound okay?
I'm sorry.
Yes.
You, they want to meet with the planning commission and the select board?
They, they just offered to start to meet with the town.
Meeting?
Yep.
I was gonna, meeting with a company, not, not the planning, not the Regional Planning Commission?
Right, the developers.
Yes.
Yeah, and and they have two names for these two, two different projects, same company, I believe. But those are the names of the solar projects they're proposing that are on the agenda. Patch Pond and Wall Musack River.
And both are on properties owned by the.
The Thomas family.
Thomas Dairy, or Thomas's, yeah.
I forget how many acres. I'm not sure we saw how many acres it would take up.
They do not say.
And and, you know, I looked at our, our future land use map. It's commercial. We've designated it as commercial in there. So there's, you know, there's, there's nothing that would go against our town plan, I don't think. I think if there is an issue, maybe visibility or maybe, you know, or or maybe not. I don't know. We'll have to see their configuration.
You can't, you can't see the Armory from too many places, so it's pretty well hidden.
Yeah, solar panels will probably be pointed west mostly, so those might be noticeable. There might be some glare issues. I don't know.
It'd also be between the Armory and the, and the road.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't know. I don't know what it's like up there. I'm not sure where where the space is.
And there's always the access issue up there. Because the state does not want to grant any more access onto Route 7 because it's, you know, it's, it's really narrow there and it's a pretty busy place. And then, and then to go to access the Post Road, we ran into this with another project up there. They would have to go through the federal government, through the, you know, the Armory.
I'm sorry.
They'd have to go through the feds to get permission to, they, they may have to go through the feds to get permission to access Post Road. Depending on where this is, we, we haven't seen any maps. We haven't seen, we haven't seen any schematics or anything.
Yeah, all, all they've done is provide a parcel ID, but nothing else. So that's really. So it's all speculative. We should wait to see what we're getting. And that's why it might be worth a dialogue to begin with for them to actually show us what they want to do. So.
Yeah, they don't have permission. They're going through the process with the PUC. But it's, it's a big enough project, double project, that I think, yeah, we would want some early discussions with them.
Right.
If we need to steer them a certain way or, Norm.
Well, the wood, wood, how much more of the room between what we have and what our target is would this consume?
I haven't done the math, but it probably would put us real close, if not over. Yeah.
Well, it would be helpful to have that information.
Okay, I'll, I'll do the math.
Yeah, he says it's utility scale. There's no, there's no reference to size or kilowatts or anything.
Yeah, it's utility scale is usually about two, two megawatts usually. So they're, they're talking two of those. So again, it's, it's, just to give you a, you know, visual, you know, the North Clarendon array would be one. So it'd be like two of those together there.
Yep.
Well, actually, no, there's some parts of the North Clarendon one that are, I think, favorable. It's not all that viewable from Route 7, visible from Route 7 because it's sunken. And as it goes toward the airport, the topography changes a little bit. But all in all, my, my impression of that is of the North Clarendon one, when impact is favorable.
Okay, thanks, Barbara, for the update. Bill will schedule that or will, Bill will schedule a future meeting?
Also see, yeah, and if the select board is not interested, you want to meet with them or just ourselves?
Yes.
Sound like, yeah.
Yeah, it can't hurt for us to get information. I'm always interested in knowing what we're making decisions about or how things can impact us. So.
Right.
And if we met with them, we could also give them some, some idea of what, what materials we'd like to see as part of their presentation.
Right.
Okay, okay. All right. The last item of business would be the minutes from August 6.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Okay, Chairman's second. Any discussion?
I just had one question. One on, under Old Business, subparagraph F, what does the term QR stand for?
QR code.
Barcodes.
QR code. It's like the square. It's a square code you scan with a cell phone and it links you to more data. So you don't have to have this huge sign that says everything about an area. You could have a code that says, learn more. You scan this and it brings you online to all the data. But QR codes are very prevalent. That's a very common thing.
Okay, I just didn't know what it was. Thank you.
Technically, if you really want to know, they're called quick response codes. So Q and R is quick and response for all of those linguistically oriented.
Thank you, Dana.
Yeah, I just had to chime in, you know.
Any other comments about the minutes? Jim, are you still there?
I am.
Okay. Have we, have we eliminated you from any of these discussions at all?
That's a yes, I think.
He's chimed in a couple of times, so.
Okay, ready for the question on the minutes? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, opposed? Okay. So we have come to the end of our agenda.
Motion to adjourn?
That means we need a motion to adjourn by Dana.
When is the next meeting?
Three weeks.
17th.
Thank you.
Anybody want to second that motion?
Oh, I do.
Second.
I'll second. Howard, it's good to see you.
How you doing?
We woke you up, I bet.
Yeah, I was having a good little rest here.
Have you been here the whole time, Howard?
Well, absolutely.
Hey, folks, I really haven't had dinner yet, so I have to go get something to eat.
Well, we are, we are adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Very much.